It's a little after six, so I'm gonna call the special meeting of this Ojai City Council and Planning Commission to order. Could we have a roll call, please, of the city council?
Mr. DeMille.
Yes.
Mayor Blatt.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Wierke.
Here.
Councilman Laura. No, Councilman Haney.
Here.
Councilman La...
Is gonna be absent.
Should we call Severo? My idea, forgotten.
He's on his way.
Oh, he's on his way, okay.
Thank you.
All right, roll call for the Planning Commission, please.
I don't have the Planning Commission list, I'm sorry. Hang on one second, hang on.
Delegate to the chair.
John Merk.
Here.
Stephen Quilicey.
He hasn't taken his seat yet.
Okay, Kathleen Nolan, here. Rosalie Zabilla.
Zabella, here.
I'm sorry about the names. Chester Aigo. And staff liaison Kathleen Wold.
Here.
Kathleen. Am I missing anybody? Steve McLeary?
Well, we would be staff, so you would only be taking the commission's roll call, so...
All right, well, welcome, everybody. I'm gonna turn this over to the chair of the Planning Commission in a moment, but my understanding is that the issues that we're gonna be discussing in this format, which is really more of a workshop or discussion meeting, is the Ojai water supply and how it's gonna affect future development in town. The Planning Commission tasks for the council and for staff, and then the third one is the priorities for staff and the commission. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Chair Zabella.
Thank you. So, it just has become apparent in our last two Planning Commission meetings, the first of which had to do with looking at our creation of second unit ordinance and then the concept review on the project at the bowling alley, that we're sort of lacking the vision thing with regard to water. And, I mean, it's obvious to anybody who's driven past the lake that we have a very big problem in the citizenry, or have been very vocal about this as well, not just in the meetings, but I'm hearing it every day in my real estate office. People who are talking about selling because of it, people who are concerned about buying because of it, and near as I can tell, our only plan is to hope for rain. And, we, near as I can tell, we don't have a Plan B. And it's, I will say, when the real estate market crashed, for the first two or three years, Ojai was doing fine. But it was a perception that was created, that every, that, I guess what I'm trying to say is the perception that real estate was crashing ultimately affected us, even though foreclosures were a very small part of our market. And the point I'm trying to make is that perception is everything, and when someone walks into my office and says, "I'm really scared," and I don't have an answer for them about what our Plan B is, that does not bode well for us. We need to have Plan B. And we are looking to you guys to marshal the efforts for the city and whatever partnerships we can create countywide or valleywide to get a Plan B. So that's the first thing. What was the second thing we were gonna talk about?
It was the Planning Commission tasks for the council and staff.
Right, so, we've also sort of, we've been given, we've been tasked with certain things, and the tasks have been a little too broad. I think that when we, when we are tasked with things, we need a little more direction as to how to proceed, what, we need, we need a little bit more of a container for the tasks that we're given, and we need, we need some kind of process to be clarified as to how we are to proceed, because we otherwise do a lot of spinning our wheels, not really moving toward a goal.
Can you give us an example?
Well, the second, the, looking at the second unit ordinance, you know, we, we really sort of had to kind of back our way into why we were looking at it, what was the goal, what were we trying to achieve? And we were at, we were really, you know, we went back to the general plan, and, but we really felt like we were feeling our way in the dark as to really what our goal was, why we were looking at it, what, what was our goal, what were we trying to achieve? And, so that would be one example. You know, again, we, we have these other things that we're talking about, like sustainable, sustainability committees and things like that, but again, I feel like we are talking about the frosting rather than the fundamentals, and we need to go back to the fundamentals. What is our vision for the city? What are we trying to achieve? And what, what are our resources? What are our natural resources that we're calling upon and draining and using, and how are we gonna move forward as a city? I hear a lot of the citizenry saying, "We have become a town that is catering only to tourists, and we are not providing for our own community." And, again, that goes back to vision. What's our vision for this town? What's our vision for development? Who are we providing for? So those two things kind of go hand in hand to me.
And the third thing?
The third thing is commission and staff priorities.
So, again, water, vision, what's our big vision for the city? We need that direction from you. And, I think we are still seeing long turnaround times at the Development Department. How do we make this a priority so that the applicants are getting served first? That all this incredible increase in business that we have had over the last two or three years, you know, where's that money going? Is it getting plowed back into the department? Where's it going? Because I have been coming to that department long before I was a planning commissioner, and I just don't, I see, the work has gone up like crazy, and I just, I see the same faces, and I see the same amount of space allocated to those people. And, you know, we gotta be able to get stuff done more efficiently. That is a revenue production center. Let's make use of it while we can, because the tide is high right now, but, not to mix my metaphors about the water, but I don't know how long that's gonna last. So, thank you.
All right, do we have any other comments by the Planning Commissioners? John?
This is not something we've really discussed, but I've heard a lot of sort of rumor about the school district and what they're gonna do with the Chaparral School property, and I don't know that it, that we even have any jurisdiction over that unless, if it becomes not school district property, then all of a sudden it'll be a big thing. I would appreciate any kind of input the council would have on how we wanna proceed with that. Do, I mean, do we wanna tell the school district right now, "No, you can't build 100 units on that property"? Because that's what I've heard people saying, is, "Oh yeah, we're gonna put all this stuff in there." I'm like, "I don't think you can do that right in the middle of town," but I'd be curious to know, anybody has any? I think we're kind of shooting in the dark right now, because we really don't have anything to report about.
Okay. Yes?
I'll make a comment. In the not-too-distant past, one of our recent retired Planning Commissioners, Mac Lajowski, came forward and wanted to form a sustainability committee. I must admit, even though I am a member, as well as Commissioner Jagiello, I'm not sure exactly what the directive was. Commissioner Jagiello and myself have met since Commissioner Lajowski retired, and we would like to move forward with this. We do have some ideas, but we, we wanna stop. We wanna find out exactly what transpired and what a city council actually approved or wanted to see come out of that committee. And the reason I'm bringing it up right now is sustainability, resiliency, regenerative conservation, these all tie in with everything that we're talking about. It ties in with housing, it ties in with our water supply, you know, our air quality, our quality of life, our social, community activities here. So it's very, you know, a broad stroke. So, I guess what I'm trying to say is that the two of us are interested in moving forward with that any way we can, but once again, we kind of need to hear from the city council, how would that tie into our, our vision and our overall objective and goals and plans for the city?
Okay. Anybody else from the Planning Commission? No? Before we go around to the council, I'm just gonna see if there's anybody in the audience that wants to address us on, on these issues that the Planning Commission has raised? No? Okay. Mayor Pro Tem Wierke, did you have something?
Well, I'll start out if we're gonna round robin a little bit. And I, I wanna make, I'm gonna make some statements I hope to be corrected if I'm wrong, all right, just in my understanding of these issues. And number one, we'll start with water. My understanding is, and this is what we, just the reality of the playing field, that's not really a playing field, but the reality of what we're dealing with. Number one, we have two sources of water, the aquifer and the reservoir, neither of which the city has any direct management authority over. Now, that's, we may not like that, but that's, that's a fact of life, all right? We have a seat on the management board for the, the aquifer, and we do not have any seat on the board, because they're elected positions for the reservoir, just for a matter of the facts. It's new state law, and the implementation of the new state law for sustainability plans, this is what we're talking about, goes to those two agencies that we have, one is the OB GMA and the other is the Casitas Board. So there are agencies tasked with the sustainability approach. So we have no direct authority over our water resources, unfortunately. I think, Chair Zabella, I think what you're talking about is what is maybe the best way that we can influence. I think that's what you're getting at, in terms of the sustainability plans that are being formulated under state law by the, by these two agencies. There's been some, we've been, I think, very supportive as a council, for example, in backing Mr. Supervisor Bennett's well moratorium on the adjustments in the, in the boundaries for the OB GMA aquifer. I think we've, when things have come to us from these agencies, we've been supportive. The question is, what beyond that can we do, since we have no direct actual authority in terms of a vision of trying to influence the management? Because, again, the city, what, 4.2 square miles of the entire Ojai Valley and a very small, small part of the population of the entire valley. So, I think we're structurally limited in terms of what we can do. The question is, how do we leverage what influence we have? I would say two things about that, just to come to mind. One is, the general plan for, and the Ojai area plan is under review by Ventura County. They're going to be at the Municipal Advisory Council, 16th, I believe, is the, a presentation on the general plan that everyone interested should go to. I think we do need to try to influence, both through the sphere of influence and being the only incorporated in the area, as much of a responsible changes to that general plan as we can. I think that's one thing that comes to mind immediately. And, and then, and then, second of all, we need to look at perhaps how we can inject our influence a little bit more in a, in a visionary way with these other two authorities. So those are two things that come to mind. And, I'll, I'll leave it at that. I just wanted to get that, those, I think those are all true facts, and if I'm incorrect, tell me I'm, I am. On, on the issue of the school district, my understanding, if I stand to be corrected, is that our authority under the land use comes into play as soon as they abandon their educational use of the property. Even if it's still owned by the school board, if it's not being used for educational use, we're involved, okay? It also is designated under our housing element as a affordable housing potential site. I didn't decide to state that for the facts, you know. In terms of the tasks, I struggle sometimes with delegating things to the Planning Commission. We don't wanna seem like we're dictatorial, we're looking for input, you know? So if we get too specific, it's kind of abridging your, your discretion, and that's what we're looking for, is your, your thoughts and recommendations. But I understand on the second unit thing, maybe a little bit more structure of the goals without being prescriptive in terms of meeting those goals would be helpful. So I'm, I'm okay with that. I think about, about all we said was that, you know, are there some unnecessary impediments that we can remove, and maybe we could've been a little bit more specific. So I take that, and I think I've already taken enough time, but I just wanted to make those comments.
Thank you.
Councilman Laura, anything to add?
Mayor Blatt, and I apologize to everybody for arriving late. Just, I, I didn't get the gist of the beginning, but kind of listening through, at the end of Kathy's talk about sustainability and what Mayor Pro Tem Wierke talked about, I think Mayor Pro Tem Wierke really hit it on the nail. In terms of water issues, since I didn't hear the beginning, I kinda hesitate to add any more input, other than another way of indirectly affecting the influence of waters through our landscape ordinance. That would be the only other way of sending a message, or inviting maybe Casitas or, or OB GMA to have input on some of the ordinances that have to do with water. That would be my only other input. What I held, held with the school district, again, I don't, I think, I don't think I need to add anything new to what Mayor Pro Tem Wierke said, I think he explained it very thoroughly. And in terms of tasks, also, I, I'm in agreement with Mayor Pro Tem Wierke in terms of us delegating certain things. I mean, there are certain things that we do want you to, to look at when it comes to policy, and if it comes under Title X, I would be in support of sending it to the Planning Commission, but I would also be open to your suggestions, like the second unit, seeing what else you guys are hearing from the community, 'cause you guys, to a somewhat degree, mostly are advisory, and you guys are other ears to what the public says about these ordinances that have to do with Title X, that I would absolutely be willing to listen, and if you guys think there should be some modifications, obviously, to the second unit in particular, I'd be more than happy to see what, what you guys have, have to say in regards to any changes and modifications. But other than that, yeah, I agree with Mayor Pro Tem Wierke.
I think the water issue is about how we, how we deal with it from the public standpoint. They come before us going, you know, we have a project coming up, and they're saying, "No, you can't do that project, we have a serious water shortage." Then we're looking at each other going, "Yeah, we do have a serious water shortage," but what do we, what do we say? What do we do about that? And that's, that's our, our concern. We need direction on, is there a point where we're gonna consider a moratorium on all-new construction? I don't know. At what point is there an emergency state declared, and who declares that state? And if we understood those things in better terms, like had an outline, so when those questions came up, that were factual, that would be very helpful.
And I think the agencies would be important to connect with OB GMA and Golden State.
Right now, both Golden State Water, the OB GIM, and Casitas are not declining the will-serv letters. They're the ones that are managing the water supply. There is no thought of a moratorium at this point, only because even the state, through our housing element, when we're talking about how many housing units we have to be able to, to have available sites for, for building, doesn't even allow us to argue about the water issue. So, the water issue is, is pretty much a non-issue, other than us liking to talk about it. Now, I sit on the board of, of the Basin Groundwater Management Agency, and, you know, there, and Casitas is on there, and Golden State has a seat on it, so we are talking about it. But, you know, they don't, they don't believe right now that there's any sense of urgency to put a moratorium in, or to even consider not issuing will-serv letters. So, they're the ones that are kind of monitoring this, and they're also the ones that are coming up with the new plans that are mandated by the state over these basins. So we're kind, it's kind of as though we really don't have a heck of a lot of control over it. And even though we all believe that there's a, a water crisis, which there is, the state even said there was, of course, not quite as much as it was, because the winter, there's been some pretty good snowpack and stuff, we're not in a position where the city can take a, an affirmative role and say, "We want to, you know, put a moratorium in place," or ask for a moratorium, because we don't have control over it. I think what Councilman Laura said, and perhaps Councilman Haney can add to it, the only influence we really have is a landscape plan, but in the big scheme of things, I don't think that the landscape plan really makes a heck of a lot of difference when it comes to water conservation. And the other thing is, us conserving water doesn't save us any money, as long as Golden State is in the picture, because the more we, the more we save, the, the higher our rates go. So, yeah, we're kinda in a, in a situation where, as far as the Planning Commission is concerned, if somebody raises the issue about water, it really isn't an issue, until such time as the issuing agencies of these will-serv letters is gonna say, "We're not gonna issue anymore." Because they're the ones that have control of it. Yeah?
So, I understand the, I understand what you're saying, for sure. It ju, it just flies in the face of sanity, I think, to, we, we may not have control, but I think all projects certainly are not created the same, some are much more thirsty than others. It would be good for us to have some actual data on what does a 40-unit hotel suck up in terms of water, and who's using that water versus some other project? I mean, I think we can make, I think we are in a crisis. I don't know that we should be depending on, on the decision-makers to protect us. I think we have to take whatever power we can in our own hands, get the data, and, and make some, whatever common sense decisions we can, even though we don't have much control. I think there absolutely are things that we can do, in terms of the projects that the city is inclined to approve, as well as perhaps urging the citizenry to, to, to take this as seriously as we should be. I think people in Northern California are sitting a lot prettier than we are. We don't have pipelines to that water. I think, I think that we need a real reality check in terms of how we're conserving. I'd like to see the city really, you know, make this a priority, in terms of, of educating us and, you know, training, training us to deal with long-term chronic scarcity.
One other thing I'll add, and then I'll get to you, Randy, is there has to be any kind of a major development, there's gonna have to be SEQA. So, you know, that's gonna take certain things into consideration, but even with, with SEQA, if the issuing agencies say there's water, chances are they're gonna get approved. There may be other things, air quality and traffic and things like that, that may cause some problems, but we can spin our wheels all we want on water, and we have very little control over it. And I don't think we can say, "Oh, your project is a, is a, what do they call it, with a gross polluter of an automobile, a gross consumer of water, and this one isn't, so you're not gonna get approved, and this one is," when the issuing agencies for the will-serv letters are gonna give it to them.
I agree with that, Mayor Blatt. I'd like to just add a couple of things, and probably, they're probably more personal than they are factual, because I agree with, with everything that's been said. I think the most important thing is, I don't think we wanna open ourselves up to lawsuits by making policy without having law behind us. So in other words, I don't think planning can turn down a development based on your gut feel about it. It has to be factual, and it's gotta be ethical, and it's gotta be, it's gotta follow the laws. So that's one thing. On a personal note, I would say, I've shut the water off to the grass at my house. Now, I only have 400 feet of grass at my house, but it's, it's off, and I'm planning on killing it this week and removing it. And so I think there's a personal choice that a lot in the community can take and make. And if more of us make those choices, and others see it, then others might go along with it. But I don't think I'm gonna drive around and condemn my neighbor for having a better-looking lawn than me at this stage of the game, but I would sure like for them to see and recognize the same thing that you're recognizing, that there is, the lake is at 41%. Our aquifer is probably closer to 55, 60%. There's available water, but I agree with you, it's a limited amount of, of available water. So, so those are the, the personal sides of the water. I just don't, I, I think about this daily, does the city council have the right to put a mandatory one-day-a-week watering? Or do we go to Casitas Water District, because Casitas, the, Casitas Water District right now is in a, a number-three-stage, which is a restricted use of watering one day a week? So, do we follow that as a community, and we dictate that, or do we go to Golden State and ask them to do it? And, and then here's the other side of that. If I remember correctly, when Golden, when, when the water conservation came down six months ago, we hammered Golden State, because they put us in the quote, "25 or 35% savings." And, so we beat them to death over that, 'cause we didn't want that, and the reality is, we should've been a part of it, and we should have stayed within that, but we chose not to. So again, one side of us say, "Let's conserve," and the other side says, "Don't tell me to conserve." So I think these are personal issues. From a contracting point, and, and I'm sure, and Kathy and I work on projects together, I can say, from a professional architectural point of view, we are doing everything we can to remove grass from projects that we work on, and we're looking at alternatives, whether it's decomposed granite, whether it's mulch, whether it's synthetic grass, whatever, but, but we're doing that as professionals, and I'm sure Mr. Laura's doing the same thing. So, that's all I would say on water. You wanna say something about water, Kathy?
Sure.
'Cause I wanted to talk about the, I, I just, I just wanted to talk about two more things, real quick, about...
Yeah, and then I have a short comment, and then...
Regarding the school board, what was interesting to me, as I looked into the 7-11 Committee when it first was being formed, I can't cite the, the state law, but I do know this much, that before the school board can sell that property, the city and its recreation parks program, as well as its affordable housing ordinance, have first rights to that property. I know that for a fact. So, they can't do anything technically without us. And, and it's the same, it's the same thing. We can't do anything with them unless they invite us. So, that's how, that's how that's worked. And then our third one was...
Priorities.
Priorities, which was interesting, that's why I asked you for a, give me a, for instance. Because, let's go to the sustainability. I was at the planning session when Mr. Lajowski...
Yeah.
Did I say his name right?
Yeah.
That's a, that's a tongue twister. But he's the one who brought up sustainability, and he's the one who brought up forming a committee, and he's the one who said, "Yeah, let's do it," and you two said, "Yes, I'd like to be a part of it." So I think it behooves you two to go back, maybe get another member, but get your committee going and come back to council with a mission statement. And you come back to us with what you perceive sustainability to be in our community, and, and tell us what you're gonna do. That's what I'd like to see. Rather than top-down, I'd like to see it bottom-up. And I think that you two are more than capable of that, as well as other, other members of, of the Planning Commission.
The problem with that particular subject, sustainability, is that there's too many crosses between Section 9 and Section 10. We're Section 10, right? We're about zoning, right? And a lot of sustainability happens to be building codes as well. So I was talking to Kathy today, and we, it would be nice if we had someone from the Building Appeals Board, or someone that represented that field, and made it more, it'd be more effective, because if we can't touch that, it makes it, us ineffective, because they're really married, the two. So that was one thing I wanted clarification on.
Well, I, before that, let's just be careful. The last time that we mixed BAB and planning, we got a earful, and we're still getting it from the community. So I would just say, be careful when you do that. But I think you can still look sustainability from a planning perspective, and when you're...
Yeah, we can, we can. It's just that you do, you do run into those, those code situations.
Cross it over to BAB and, and ask them to, challenge them with the same thing you're challenging yourself with, because I think that that board is more than capable of looking at the building side of it and how it affects sustainability of the community. I, I think right now, I'll, I'll quiet up here and pass...
A couple comments, and then I, I, I see Attorney want to make a couple comments on your statement, I can see him behind your head, so, let me, let me make comments, and then he's gonna get up and say something. All right. I'm more comfortable with the Planning Commission exercising its role in intelligent design as opposed to building a moratorium. That's just where I'm at. For example, if we're gonna have a new lodging facility, let's make sure we have the right landscaping for sustainability, we have the right kind of graywater systems. We do what we can in terms of having good design for sustainability, rather...
I think right now I'll quiet up here and pass...
A couple of comments, and then I... See Attorney want to make a couple of comments on your statement. I can see him behind your head. So, let me make a comment, and then he's gonna get up and say something. All right. I'm more comfortable with the Planning Commission exercising its role in intelligent design as opposed to building moratorium. That's just where I'm at. For example, if we're gonna have a new lodging facility, let's make sure we have the right landscaping for sustainability. We have the right kind of gray water systems. We do what we can in terms of having good design for sustainability rather than trying to freeze our city in time. I'm just summarizing what I feel comfortable with, all right? And then, I just wanna make that comment that I just... That's the direction I individually would feel comfortable with, and I think that makes sense in terms of developing a new standards for, think, for renovations of existing building stock and so on, so forth, in terms of that, rather than... I'm very... Cities don't have good experience with moratoriums. They have all kinds of side issues and winners and losers that are not necessarily serving public policy or public interest. So, I guess that's just giving you my gut feeling. And Mr. Summers, I'll call on you for a second, and then that's it.
Thank you, Mayor Proton Wierich. Just on the school board land issue, both Mayor Blatts and Councilmember Brahini got the law right, but I wanted to provide a short explanation of it, so we're all on the same page. If the school district decides that the land, the Sheparl School or any other school district land, is surplus for their educational needs, which generally takes a resolution by the school board so declaring... And note, "educational needs" does include their educational offices. So, right now, they have some admin offices there. That counts as educational purpose, because they have their school offices there. But if they decide it's surplus for educational purposes, then they have to follow a process laid out in the government code and the education code, dispose of the land, which requires providing first right of refusal to sell the land to the city for parks and rec and affordable housing purposes, to the state, to the feds, to the county, and to certain nonprofit housing developers and certain nonprofit park developers. After they go through those rights of first refusal, and there's a specified order and a process they have to jump through with a couple of hearings and a couple of notices, then they can sell it on the open market. And once it's in that non-educational purpose use, then the city's zoning power reawakens, and the city's zoning power controls what happens there. When it's purely educational use, the city has no zoning power over it at all. Happy to clarify further.
Point of information, that last statement about rezoning power reawakening, that also includes if they seek to do a long-term lease for a non-educational purpose, retaining ownership by the school board. Is not that correct?
That is correct. If they do a long-term lease, that doesn't trigger the first right of refusal options because they're not selling it. But because it's not an educational purpose, the use... The lessees use of the land in any building by the laissee is subject to the city's zoning and permitting power. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so I'll...
Kathy?
Y'all chide in. Let's see. Where was I gonna go on this with them? Oh, I wanted to mention about the water, because we brought up... I mean, it's kind of known that the greatest use of water for residents and potentially even for commercial is in the landscape. Usually, they say 50% to 70%. I was at that brown bag meeting on, I believe that was Wednesday, they had in the park. And Steve Wickstrom from Casitas said, "It's probably higher than that here." But, you know, I think it depends on the size of the project. But one thing I wanted to mention, and it doesn't always come to us in Planning Commission, is that there is the state Model Water Efficient Landscape Ordinance that's in place. The modified ordinance went into effect December 1st, 2015. It's more stringent. And basically, there's guidelines there. So, it's really only affecting projects that go through the planning or design review process or the permit process where it triggers a landscape plan being required. But there's, you know, there's a limit on the square footage. But basically, the crux of the whole thing is, based on the size of the project, based on calculations for our area, in other words, how much water is lost to the atmosphere and plants use, put all these calculations together, each project is allowed only a certain amount of water. And it's now presently more stringent, and it's more stringent for commercial projects. Presently, commercial projects cannot use high-water-use plants on the plan. So, when you do your plans, you're listing a plant factor for all the plants. Can't... You've gotta maintain that. And then... So, anyway, that's in place. And recently, I read a draft review of the ordinance that went into effect in December. I'm not sure what's gonna happen with it, but I will say that they're looking at statewide. It may become even more stringent than what they just passed in December. I'm just passing out this information. I'm not sure where it's gonna go. I just happened to reread the review and sat in on a couple of webinars. But I think there was something that we did a couple of weeks ago, and this is when we made a recommendation for the second unit ordinance. And what we did was, we know that presently you can't exceed 640 square feet. That's the maximum size. But generally, we said, gee, we'd like to see it go bigger, up to the state level, which was 1,200 square feet. And what we ended up doing, and I think this was a very wise, sustainable move, we said, "Okay, depending on the size of the lot, you could go up to the 1,200." But there were some... I don't wanna look at it as a setback or anything, or making it more stringent, but you would have the opportunity, if you put some sustainable methods into either the main house or the new house, meaning all water-efficient plumbing appliances, the use of gray water, then that would allow you to potentially, if you met the requirements, go to the larger size. So, I think that's something we can do as a planning commission. I mean, yes, it's small. I mean, how many projects go through? Yes, we can. And it can be an example, as Randy was suggesting, you know, that we can all walk the talk and be an example. But by doing that, I think, you know, every little drop makes sense and makes a difference. And where I'm coming from on that is, I do training courses for an organization that had a contract with the Metropolitan Water District. They supply water from Southern Ventura County all the way to San Diego, and they get state water. Most of the communities, there's 26 communities involved. And the state and the Metropolitan Water District felt that residential properties were so important, one by one, that they were putting on free, or some of them had a fee, classes to the public, because all the lawns that could be removed, or they had all the turf rebates, they felt it was so important. You're getting groundwater recharge, potentially, and using less water, that they... I mean, they're still doing it. The group that I was with doesn't have the contact with Metropolitan right now, but I did a whole series last year in Santa Barbara County for them, too. So, they're doing these statewide. So, each individual property does make a difference. You know, basically, once again, every drop counts. So, I'm just putting that out there as information, not that the city's gonna come down on it. But, I mean, that's just kind of a general, what's going on in the landscape.
I think there's two things here. One is, there's no mistake that we're all concerned about it. It's just, what do we do about it? I mean, there's no issue that we have a problem. It's just sometimes you can worry yourself to death and not have any control over it. So, anything from the Planning Commission standpoint that comes before you, which is going to be mostly commercial and some residential, there's gonna be a landscaping plan, and that's gonna have to conform to whatever the guidelines are. What I think Kathy is saying is, but there's a lot of... If a new house development, residential development is gonna be done, unless it's two stories, it's not gonna come before the Planning Commission. So, you don't even see it. So, there's no reason to worry about that from your standpoint, but as an individual or as a city, we need to worry about that. But we don't have a lot of new residential development, anyway. So, we're really looking more at existing and to be able to affect some sort of a more efficient way for people to utilize their landscaping or change their landscaping or something that's probably gonna have more effect on it than anything else. But... And we probably could, if the council decides it, to look at a new landscaping ordinance for the entire city for residential building. But it's... I mean, that's something that we'd have to look at. And I don't know whether that's gonna be necessarily one of the higher priorities we have, although it could be if any council member wanted to bring it forward. But from the Planning Commission, you know, like, I was here for the Planning Commission meeting last week when that design review came through, and there was an issue of water. Well, there's really not much you can do about it. I wouldn't even look at the project from this consideration of water, to tell you the truth. If the landscaping plan for it has... is gonna have to conform to whatever the regulations are, and it's a brewery and a... What was presented to you, a brewery and a hotel, to think, "Okay, well, you know, all these hotel rooms are gonna use a lot of water," I don't think that's something that you guys should really be concerned about. I mean, you can be concerned about it, but it's not within your purview to be concerned about it, because there's not a heck of a lot we can do about it. So, from an applicant's standpoint, for instance, an applicant getting feedback, "We don't like this project because you're gonna use too much water," would not be appropriate, in my opinion. And I'll... It's just my opinion, but I'll... I mean, you might be able to throw that out as an idea, but I don't think that that would be a reason to deny the project at this point. I do have a comment, though, and then I'll go around again. I do have a comment on the two other issues. More direction to you guys when we send something back to you. Believe it or not, sometimes when we send it to you, we don't have a lot of direction because we don't know what to do, okay? It's come to us, and we don't even know what the goal is necessarily. But when we send you something, it's because we're looking for your expertise in that one area of city operations, which you have, that we are not dealing with day in and day out, or week in and week out, or month in and month out, like you are. But if you ever get something that, you know, you say, "Boy, I don't know what the council wants us to do." Just memo it back to us through Kathleen and say, "The Planning Commission needs more direction on what it is you guys want us to do." And then we'll talk about it, and we'll get you some more direction. But sometimes, we're kind of sending you an absolutely clear slate with no direction, because we really do want your ideas, not what we're gonna send down the line to tell you what we want. We wanna know what you think is best. The other is that I'll just... And then I'm gonna stop, because we're gonna go around. We have 15 minutes left, is these priorities. And I'll tell you what the council has done for priorities, and it may be something that is the chair of the Planning Commission you wanna consider. We began at the beginning of this year saying that we were concerned that we had been giving staff various projects. And that was like a project today, and then two weeks from now, another project, and we put that one here, and this one in front of that, and this in front of that. And eventually, I was feeling like nothing was getting done, because there was no rhyme or reason to whatever staff was being told to work on. And sometimes, they'd be working on something, and then we'd throw something else in. So, right now, we have a list of projects and certain things that we have staff working on. That's a list. And they're in a priority list. Now, some of them take longer than others, because some of the things on that priority list, not only does staff do, but then it has to go to the Planning Commission. Well, that can't come back to us maybe before something goes in front of it. But nothing goes in front of another project on that list, no matter what it is, unless the council says we want this to go in front of whatever. And that's just the way we've been operating. And to me, it's put a little bit more rhyme or reason to it. There's always gonna be something that pops up, probably. But at least if it pops up, we're gonna know, okay, we're mentally gonna say, "Okay, this project needs to go in front of this one, unfortunately." If everything were equal, the way we want it to go is, in exactly the same order we gave it to staff, is the same order it would come back to us. That's our... That is really the way we're trying to do it. But as I say, it doesn't always work that way, because we might give them something to work on that doesn't have to go to the Planning Commission, or the Historic Preservation Commission, or the Arts Commission. So, that's gonna take more time, so another one might come back to us before. They didn't have to go to a commission. But that might help in your situation, too. I don't know. It's helped us, I think. All right. Who else? Planning Commission or... Okay.
Mayor Blatts. I just wanted... I agree with Mayor Proton Wierich in terms of when you're looking at projects, looking at more an architectural look and seeing what Title X, and like you mentioned, what's in your purview, and seeing creative ways on how to save water. It was interesting, I just went to Southern California Association of Government Conference, and the two top issues that journalist Dan Walter and some others mentioned that the state is gonna be looking at, the first one is water. It's gonna be huge. And then the second one is transportation. So, it is important to be talking about water. I know it's not in your purview, but it is... It's something that we might wanna start collaborating with certain agencies, and I would not be opposed of somehow, I don't know whether it be through your dedication or through... Or with assistance with the city, is to look at what OBGMA is doing, because they are ahead of the game in terms of ground sustainability, groundwater sustainability, ahead, because the state has, I have to say, is challenged with what it's gonna do. And I think we have a perfect agency that has been proactive. So, I would invite you guys either do it on your own or see how we could coordinate with staff in getting you that information, because there's a lot of data over there that they have that could probably help you guys. And then... And I was looking at the crime statistics two weeks ago that the police chief was presenting to us. It said, 1991 to 2015, we had only increased 75 people. So, that's amazing to me. I mean, that's a shocker when I looked at the population from 91 to 2015. We had only increased 75 people. So, I mean, it's hard...
It's like the shocker of the guest house. We've only built... We've only given seven permits for second dwellings in the last three years. We're averaging two a year. Talk about zero growth and zero opportunity for...
So, if we... If we just... There's so much statistics out there that we could... That could assist you in what you're thinking. And I know it's something to talk about, because they're important issues. I mean, water is a resource that we all need. But that was my only comment. But other than that, I like the conversation.
I have one other thing to say. I, as I said earlier, I sit, and Mayor Proton Wierich is the alternate on the Groundwater Basin Agency. We meet the last Thursday of the month at 5:00 at Wild Tennis Academy, and I'd welcome you to come and sit in on the discussions. There's always people from the public there, and you're welcome to make a public comment or questions or whatever. So, it's the last Thursday of the month, 5:00. Okay?
Mayor, I just wanted to... I wanted to touch on that. The water issue facing the state is Northern California is flush. They're letting water out of their dams. And Southern California is not so flush. That's the debate that's going on up north. That's the debate. It's... And Southern California has to figure out how they're gonna fit into the state. And so, when we talk about water, I'm just saying that that's huge. They're letting water out of their dams right now.
Another interesting fact is that the vast majority of the water comes from the Sierra Nevada snowpack, and 97% of the water from the snowpack runs right into the Sacramento River and out underneath the Golden Gate Bridge. And in this day and age, they can't build any reservoirs, because environmentally, they cannot get any reservoirs approved. So, here, we're stuck with utilizing 3% of that snowpack and no way to capture it, for the most part, because of the environmental constraints that the state has put in. Can you imagine how much water we'd have if we captured just 50% of it? We're only capturing 3% of it now.
And I wanna amplify that further on a couple of points. Number one, you may or may not know that whereas sanitation districts all over the state are learning to reuse their discharges for non-potable purposes, our sanitary district for the valley is prohibited from doing that at all. These are things, first-order issues, we need to educate ourselves about. And the reason is that they are under orders for... The Ventura River is basically the sanitary district discharge during drought conditions, and they have environmental reasons why they cannot even look at you in one drop. You can't even fill up a truck to do dust control on the highway projects from their discharge. But no one's done the study to determine exactly what's needed to preserve habitat as opposed to just the total ban. And these are first-order issues that need to be looked at for sustainability. Plus, the city of Ventura gets water from the Sierra snowpack. They're on the state water project. Do you realize we are discharging... The public needs to know, we are discharging about a third of the withdrawals from Lake Casitas are going to the city of Ventura that has an alternate source, out of the valley that does not have an alternate source. I mean, there are many issues here that need to be looked at beyond, you know, the issues just within the city that I think we need to try to raise the debate on, okay? And then raise the awareness of and influence the debate on these issues. Last point I wanted to amplify, Mayor Blatts' point, is that in terms of setting priorities, I've always looked at each of these commissions and the board as their extensions. They help the council govern, all right? We can't govern the city without you guys, all right? govern, all right? We can't govern the city without you guys, all right? And so, when we're talking about setting priorities, you're an extension of what we're trying to do. We can't, you know, when Mayor Blatts was saying, you know, sometimes we're not sure of the direction, please understand that. So, okay, you start deliberating on something, it looks like, all right, you're at an impasse, you're at a fork in the road, you need more direction, need to involve us in that deliberation, get back to us right away. We want you to. We invite it. We welcome it. Don't agonize about it. Just get back to us right away. Involve us in the thought process, please. So, rather than maybe trying to say, do it this way, you know, we'll try to do better on direction, but also, please, don't ever hesitate to come back to us with the thinking that, as you've developed it, in terms of our further input.
I'd like to give staff an opportunity. Do you have any comments or anything, Steve?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nothing from me.
Okay. Kathleen, anything?
No, I thought this was a really great discussion. It really was enlightening. I think that we can work with what you've given us and do some good things with that, especially with the design and sustainability and looking at creative ways. Don't you guys think so? I think so, too. Real good.
Any other comments here? If not, I'll see if anybody in the audience wants to make a comment now after hearing this. No?
I just wanted to-
Yes, Chester.
Oh, I didn't. I mean, I might-
All right. Anything, Chair?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much. I thought it was an excellent get-together, and we'll be doing it more. The special meeting is adjourned.